I would never.
So, lot number five, the acre twenty fifth, we have five students crisis on the president of the form. First item is approval of watch minutes. Did you receive a copy of your soul? Can I pay a motion to approve?
I approve.
I have a motion to go outside. I have a side. Send questions. In our favor, please vote for saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Approval of the agenda, is any additions or additions, uh, set up? I have a motion to approve, I've got a motion to a side. Side. Any questions? In our favor, please vote for saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Public comment, any item on the agenda, uh, do we have a sign sheet?
Yes, sir. We had several people sign up to speak, uh, for, for one of those that is odd reasons, I want to come over here. Uh, so, would you mind, yes, sir, a little bit of advice?
Okay, would you go ahead and...
Yes, sir. The first person to sign up is Mr. Colin Schmidt, I'm speaking on the outline.
Alright, I'm, I represent the district eighteen in the county commission, and, uh, we've been having some communication back and forth with the residents across point subdivision, which backs up outline. Uh, and several, uh, people reach out with concerns of even though the blasting was only required to be notified, they're only required to be notified within three hundred feet, that some are saying they did have some foundation, uh, damage when the one workshop it's under, was built years ago, and that was way over three hundred feet. The other concern is flooding, you know, we've got some residents here and I can show some, uh, some of their concerns with that. Uh, I just wanna know, what recourse will these citizens have if they wake up tomorrow after the house has been built and promise, I don't know, have any flood issues or foundation problems? Is there any recourse they're gonna have should it go wrong? And they do have any kind of flooding damage or foundation damage after that neighborhood is built?
I, that's, we can ask Josh to tell, uh, that's a legal question typically, but he's not here, uh, speaking right there, so, do you care?
Y- yes, sir. So, we're the members of the blasting issues, the county, and I, I, we've talked about that some, that the county is, is essentially forbidden for regulating blasting counties. The cities can't regulate blasting activities in the state of Tennessee. Uh, all of the issues related to it as far as things, people's foundation issues or those kinds of things, they're, they're in the state regulations, state law, um, that, uh, you know, the contractor is gonna do the blasting, has to do survey, even in a certain distance of, uh, I wanna say survey, it's not to get your opinion, it's to go look at your house and take pictures and that kinda thing. Uh, all that's done by statute and by the regulations of the state fire marshal office. And so, if there are issues, um, that, uh, I would say that they certainly have legal recourse, again, we've not weighed off in the legal territory there, uh, but I also have recourse to the state fire marshal's office, called the state fire marshal. Um, it's reported issues that, you know, because of, um, there are things that go wrong with blast and that kinda thing. Things aren't done properly due by question, and there's a, there's a portal that you can actually submit complaints and concerns and that kinda thing to the state fire marshal, and then do undertake, uh, investigations and look into them. So, if there are issues, I'll, if it would go from there. But none of that will be out of the county's sight. But as far as the flooding issues and that kinda thing, um, that is something that we work, uh, throughout the development process. Right now, we're at the preliminary plan, construction plans, they usually look at the construction plans of county engineers to, to make sure that the construction plans meet our requirements, and they're gonna show stormwater to be, uh, directed where we're supposed to go, contain it on site, this is required by our stormwater resolution. Um, during construction, um, we have a, a responsibility as well, um, so, to work with the developers to make sure that they, uh, contain the stormwater on site during construction, structures on site, on all of the blood, they're gonna set it on site, uh, to the extent possible, uh, and then post construction, uh, that, that they're required to, to get everything stabilized, ready to go, like, as far as what they're supposed to warm, um, and, uh, and then there should be no issues, uh, based on the own calculations, construction plans, and construction, we can expect it during enforcement of construction, the extra pipes, detention ponds, roads, and all that stuff, especially. And so, everything is built according to the design, should be no issues. But that said, during construction, we certainly find out where we, uh, undertake build adjustments, and we say this is the developer, I, this isn't working like we're supposed to exactly, so you're gonna need to fix this, you're gonna need to change this, you're gonna need to do, put something here to, to, to fix this issue. Um, and so, uh, in general, we, we definitely deserve, back in ten, fifteen years ago, when the county didn't have these kinds of, there were two ways, a lot of issues, and we're still dealing with a lot of them to this day. Um, I do like to think that our process is now, though, you know, nobody's perfect, nothing's a hundred percent, but I think we, we can't even prevent a lot more problems than that, than we usually do. Certainly. If there are issues, um, if, if there are flooding issues, if there was to be something that's a bit cracked, um, there is a, a principle, you know, that, uh, you know, that, that, again, again, you know, that will leave the territory, but they certainly have recourse, legally as well, with, to, to the developer, if there was some kind of issues or calls by the developer that didn't exist before.
How long, I mean, was this statute of limitations, worst case scenario, we get a really bad rain, you know, in five years after this development, it's been built, it's finished, developers, you know, developed, we've done, and we see, you know, worst case scenario, if something just doesn't work the way it was promised during construction, or maybe just failed, you know, do, do these residents have any kinda, you know, what recourse do they have? Do they go to the county and say, hey, look, you know, we've got flooding issues here, um, a couple of my co-commissions have sat through, you know, of course, this is not his, hey, I don't think it's the hollows, or, but I think in that neighborhood, when we sat through that in one of our committee meetings, that, my goodness, if they wake up five years from now, have some flooding there, I mean, do they have any recourse, or, or are they just kinda on their own at that point?
Well, that, that is way off the road, you know, I, I, I don't know, I'm sorry to hear on that, but, but like I said, during the course of the process, we certainly have an obligation to make sure that things are done right. And when, when that happens, and everything's done like it's supposed to, uh, I would say that the public, we're always out here, I don't have those kinds of issues. So, as, as long as nobody's asleep, and the people, and things are ending up, especially, and everybody's been held accountable, um, you, you never won't have those kinds of problems. Uh, but, but if there are, you know, there's, there's, you have, right, it could be, or you know, there might be a drainage, there might be a project here, but it's something that could be undertaken, I don't know, you know, but, but it would depend on what the specific situation was.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it, thank you.
Uh, next person to sign up is Kendall Bennett.
Good evening, this is self-sold regarding to the outline, uh, development project. So, I would first like to thank the planning commission for introducing the number of homes that are on this property, and for seriously considering the comments from the citizens. Um, today I want to express my concerns, the basis for those concerns, and her request for action on those concerns. So, I have five concerns. Um, the, that the development will increase the volume of water that's currently on my property, draining on my property, that it will increase the velocity of the water coming onto my property, um, continued soil erosion of the development property that's causing erosion on my property, that's currently, uh, flooding on my property, and the effects of blasting on subject systems, the entire cross point subdivision is unsettled.
Excuse me, would you, well, the record, so, what, would you do your name here first, please?
Oh, yes, my name is Kendall Bennett, and I reside at one seventeen cross point.
Thank you, sir.
Um, so, the basis for my concerns, so, this is a printout of the, the proposed development plan as far as I know it. Uh, my property is listed as number nine for, uh, on the cross point side. It backs up directly to number five. Um, and as you look at properties four, five, six, and seven on the proposed plan, the topograph, topographical lines don't appear to be of much concern. But what I wanna show you is that the, so, looking at this picture here. Um, it's a long high rate, so, the lines are far apart on the top graphical map, that this is a real rise going from the back of my property all the way up to the farm. This picture is on my property, looking back at the farm. I'm six one, and this, for the rise from the flat part of my property up to the farm is six to ten feet high. And then, the farm property, or the development property rises even higher than that. Um, so, here's another view of this. So, lots four, five, six, and seven all slope directly to my property, and kind of forming the, uh, the V shape, to where they are all going to drain on my property. So, um, here's a picture of what, um, my property looks like after a one to two day rain. It will continue to drain for another couple days, and if we have three, four, five days of rain, which we experience frequently, this can drain for up to seven or eight days, and it really gets mushy down in there. Um, so, some other things that I'm concerned about with this is there are drain adjacent on lots four, um, five, and seven, and I'm concerned that the, that those drain adjacent are going to collect water coming from the roof, or the driveways, or wherever, and naturally flow back in my property, which will increase the velocity of the water coming onto my property, and then, um, having to deal with that. So, erosion, lot number five currently has some erosion, it's kinda hard to see in this picture, but this is, there's a barbed wire fence that runs between my property and the development property. This area is corroding on lot number five, and is up here, here it's a barbed wire fence. Um, so, the erosion patch that's here is coming down into these areas and into these trees, so, it's causing erosion on my property. Now, I don't know about you, that if I were purchasing lot number five, I would not want to be dealing with an existing erosion problem that's at my property. So, the other thing that is of concern is there are retention, um, ponds, they're all uphill for my property. So, I don't, I don't know what to do about that, but I really feel like there is not an active planning on lots specific areas of, uh, this development. So, um, lot number four also has a, um, drain adjacent. Um, that adjacent is going to run adjacent to my property, which will run between my property and my neighbor's property. There's already a lot of water flowing through that, um, little berm, I can't remember the, the technical name for it, but, um, it's already a challenge to control water that's running between our properties, and this drain adjacent looks like it's aimed directly at the corner of my property, it's definitely going on this property, which is going to drain also on mine. Um, so, the, um, so my request, um, and call to action is to have more study before approving this, um, that would be specific to certain pieces of property, that there would be a closer look at how, um, the development property slopes into the, um, properties that back up to it. Um, I think the county should get a baseline measure of volume and velocity, so that there can be an assessment and make sure that afterward, when, when this development is in place, that there is no increase in the volume or the velocity of the water coming onto our properties. Um, ideally, if there could be a solution that would even minimize the amount of water that's currently coming on, then that would just be all the better. Um, I'd also request that the developer to be socially conscious and look for win-win solutions, um, to the citizens and their concerns. Um, especially, if the developer is in the business of building communities, then start with building a good relationship with the community that's already in there. So, thank you very much, and I hope you will seriously consider my request.
Thank you.
The chairman, the first person to sign up to speak is John Collier, uh, also speaking on the outline, so please.
Evening, my name is John Collier, I'm sitting in last meeting, and, um, Mr. Boyd was very helpful in coming out to the property to look at the different topography and how the water breaks and that, so, um, we have kinda, I guess, a little presentation, which we could wait until the agenda item comes up, or we could do something now, whichever you prefer. Okay. Is that right? Okay, thank you very much.
And, uh, the last person to sign up on this sheet is Dave Derr, but that's for the, uh, the Liberty, Liberty, I say, is that related, uh, Mr. Colonel, are you, you have a hearing, is, is that speaking on the, uh, the Liberty Farms, or what, what is the rezoning, the, uh?
Yeah, it's, uh, Liberty Farms, I guess, right across, Liberty Lane, I'm especially can't agree.
Yes, sir, so that, that one is on the hearing here, a little, a little following the words of that. Yes, sir. Yes.
Consent agenda, we have a lot of people to review those consent agenda, just for our knowledge, we'll move on. The regular, let's, uh, if you don't mind, if you don't mind, uh, okay.
Move to proof.
Yes, sir, there's a motion, yes, sir, a side.
Sure.
Was being made, second to approve the consent agenda, uh, in a discussion, in our favor, please vote for saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. So, okay, regular agenda, Liberty Farms, three, some, instead.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the first item here on the, uh, on the regular agenda is a rezoning request of property on the end of the station, can't pre-directed, and, uh, uh, Liberty Lane. Um, the chairman, this came before the planning commission last month, and was deferred at that meeting. Um, I, I'll try not to go too deep in the weeds on this, since everybody has heard it all, everybody, they will kind of, I don't know, as far as making sure we comply with everything to actually comply with the rezonies and that kinda thing. Um, this property is currently in development, uh, they're requesting to rezonate into rural residential, uh, the property owner is green, short, and settled, city, uh, project represented in the state, and he's in attendance here tonight, and we did, uh, uh, notify the county programmers by certified manuals, were required to, um, this, this item was published in the, uh, Galsville standard on April thirteenth, which is, uh, more than ten days in advance of its meeting, which is awesome, of course. Again, it was deferred at the last on speaking. Uh, this is public notice, that's placed in the paper, as is required by our zoning resolution. Um, background on this property, uh, and we actually did have an update here for this last item, Mr. Reilly did give us something, uh, this afternoon, private restrictions, um, but, but, sorry, Mr. Chairman, we'll get to that one, we'll have that, uh, talk about what, what they're proposing to do. Uh, but as far as background, this, this property, everybody's never remember, was in the Galesville planning, development, set aside, it's kind of open space, uh, no, no building lots were approved for it, um, and so, right now, the property owner's kinda looking at what to do with this rented piece, because the rest of the Galesville development had an annex in the city of Galsville many years ago, and just left this rented piece. Um, they're looking to rezonate into rural residential, or it's a bit, it's had a weak belt, and at least some wind, and get some lots out of it. Um, they've submitted as a straight zone change, which means that there's, there's options for them on the property, for the, uh, the, uh, which are, uh, a lot tighter. Um, and uses are necessary that are allowed by, that are, are zoning to be allowed, or called, it would be, it would be allowed. Um, it was deferred last month, uh, we did have a set of private restrictions that had been turned in, um, that established, you know, house size, uh, heat area, that kinda thing, uh, then, lot size within the development, the private restriction will be one point five acres, um, and there's some restrictions as well, as far as materials and that kinda thing that are allowed. And there's the draft, um, of, of, of those restrictions that was provided to everybody, this declaration of restricted covenants, that should be under the last test. Again, we just got that this afternoon, sort of, with that in fact, for you. Uh, this is that Galesville development that was cleared back in number five, you see that area circle there is, is an area in question. Um, the majority of it is located in the flood lane, was it under the flood lane, which is unbelievable, um, anything that's gonna be built in the hundred year flood lane, that bad area, that has to meet our, our requirements related to baseball elevation and that kinda thing, which are subject to change, and, and this, this development would have to meet whatever those requirements are at the time, which probably three feet above the, uh, the baseball, I'm questioning, for any, I'm sure, dude. Um, just kinda put it into context, this up here is the school, uh, purpose of the rural residential ministry, low density residential ministry, uh, development characterized by local parents, uh, this one is up there, that's the high points, um, four thousand square foot lots generally allow, however, public suburbs available at this time, but it, it, it may wish that in fact, I, if it's on the agenda to like to change that, so, then all I could do, forty thousand square feet would be effective in the most size, personally, uh, like I said, there's private restrictions that would increase that to one point five acres that have been submitted by Mr. Reilly, um, for review. Uh, this is a conceptual sketch, you see there's one, two, three, four, five lots both proposed, that range from just a couple acres to, you know, presumably about ten acres or so, um, for those lots in the back. It's in the, uh, the rural place site, um, so this is, this is an appropriate, uh, use of property, overall, this is, we're, we're trying to keep these with our county's plan. Uh, we'll have to take some pictures, that's what I'll do. Just kinda show you, it's very flat, very gently slopes backward, uh, very, uh, they're used as a safety guard around, uh, this sort of project, I'm not gonna go through all these official parties, forward, we've heard several times against my, which wasn't the fault of us, uh, but overall, all of us, I'm sure, we're, so, that's why this is the, the, the proposal, which is consistently, you know, it's a plan, they're playing mission, hand commission, but obviously, there's nothing, nothing in any policy that would, that would say, this is a, a good one. Um, next, uh, at this meeting, the planning commission is being asked for a recommendation, so you guys, Eric, can I ask, Eric, give a, give a, the positive, negative recommendation, that's what was requested, goes to the county commission, uh, goes to the study for two votes, or to read each other, um, and the full commission for an actual vote, um, which is what will determine if it passes or fails. Um, if the county commission approves it, it'll be effective at this time, and then they'll have to turn in, uh, not cycling, they'll have to turn in the plates of the seven by these lots, and then those will just be turned in to the office, and as any other subdivision by them. So, the chairmen, we have motions on the screen, about positive, negative, recommendation, or deferred, and as a service, we're going to use there at tennis time, there's, uh, I don't know, person that's, uh, just made our table of sheets.
You first, or you want to, someone else?
Oh, you're, 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 you want to, you want to, like, double speak first, or you want to have?
I know, maybe I can test you.
Edit, edit this week, okay.
Yeah, uh, that's good, yeah. And, uh, like, maybe there's lots of issues, like, I can ask, uh, who's that person?
Uh, Mr. Dave Derr.
If you don't mind, over here, what he has to say, and where might, might everyone know that.
Sure.
All right, I'm back. Uh, my name is, uh, yeah, I've, I've decided to, if you'd like, I'll, I'll, I'll finish the bill. Um, Mr. Sudd did a good job explaining, um, I don't think we need to rehash quite everything, but, uh, I'll just touch on a few key points, I think, every word at least, um, we talked about the current setting of this property last month, and how that zoning was part of a part that we, in a sense, considered defunct, because every part of that plan, uh, was not, did not come to fruition. Uh, I think that on the, the current plan that the county still has on the record, it causes abrasion pasture for, uh, questioning center that we all know is not being constructed, nor is the, um, assisted living facility, or the, the other items that are, uh, were intended back when that plan was drawn so many years ago. So, we, we've reached a point where Galesville's come to completion for the most part, and, and, and of course, that lies in the, in the city of Galsville, this is the remainder, Mr. Sudd put, and we're just trying to come up with something that does make sense for the property, um, since that really doesn't at this point, as far as, uh, fee releasing with the neighborhood. So, uh, we've worked with, uh, Councilman Holmes, uh, Councilman, uh, potential, a number of times, met with him to talk about ideas, uh, we, we met with, uh, Mr. Sudd a few times, and then more recently, this past week, as a result of last month's meeting, we, there were some questions that were raised by Councilman Miller about, um, you know, how do these become to fruition, what ifs, those type of questions, which were all very reasonable in my mind. Uh, at that point, we talked about some of the, the nature of the property, and how it's unlikely, very unlikely to be developed, just because of the, the topography and the conditions, the natural conditions that exist on the property. Uh, but, just to be sure, we, we came to a meeting at the planning department, um, I guess it was last week, and from that meeting, uh, I went away, uh, with the idea of something that we've done on other properties, and that is to self-impose restrictions upon myself for property that will, um, that will ride with the land, with, without us being, or not, or, they, they stay with the land in perpetuity. So, you've got that, I, I've heard copies, but, copies all, I guess you got copied to everybody. I'll just go through the ones, I'll hit on real quick, and not try to sound like an attorney, because they were, about one, like, we hardly understand, um, if I read it that way. Just to hit on another level, the first one in these restrictions, when you get down to the video, the first one says that every house has to be twenty five hundred square feet, that's just a set of level of standard of, of the type of property that we've discovered. Uh, the second just restricts, uh, crew infection homes on the property, just to make sure that we don't go sell too many slots and, uh, find out, for us to sell the other three, it's problematic, because one of the people who sold those two might have put on, that this wasn't our, nothing we felt like should be put on property, so, we've, um, we've restricted those on the property. Uh, the third one is to make sure that there's, there's all basing materials used in construction of homes, uh, no vinyl siding, no seco, we want to see all, all brick and stone, or some combination thereof. Uh, and the fourth is to restrict the lot size to, um, what, uh, uh, Josh said, one ha, uh, hundred, excuse me, one point five acres in size, but it reads on to saying that also, the property can't be, let me put this the right way, in language terms, can't be developed. It essentially says, you can't go in and build public roads and attempt to gain more lots, even though the lot size has been restricted to one and a half acres, some would may get more creative and high, and say, well, if I smoke a road in here, I can squeeze in five or six hundred lots. This is just to ensure that, the way it's written, it says, the frontage that exists on the property today is all, all the road frontage that could be utilized in whatever combination of, or layout configuration of lot, to ensure that you've got a minimum size, and you've also got a blanket restriction on developing property. And, and that's the gist of it, uh, we felt like that covered our basis, and, and gave us some confidence that even if we were sell four out of five lots, or three lots, that, that, that last few people that came down are gonna try to do something, squirt in on us, and, and change what we intended for the property, and we hope that... And we hope that, we hope that gives the general public a little bit of confidence as well, that, that things will be as intended.
Instead of the members of citizens, every party in the public, does anyone have any questions? The one, was that over the, uh, issue about the deed restrictions? Because after this resum, you know, so with answers, you're saying that you're going to put the restrictions, place restrictions prior to it being approved? Here we go.
That's right. So what I, what I would ask tonight, as Mr. Sutton said, you've got three options to choose from on how you handle this item. What I would ask tonight is if there is a, a recommendation of positive approval for the council to hear this item and consider this item just as I presented it. Um, but I would ask that anyone that might want to make that motion, uh, make it in a way that says that they would not recommend the council approve it until they see that this, this deed restriction is recorded at the county commissioner's office.
With those, I don't know, you can't fit.
Well, no, no, I don't think so.
You know, if I don't think.
Okay, sure. And so, I mean, I think, uh, if the, if the developers committed for, for those deed restrictions prior to going to the, the county commission, he can send me a, a, a recorded copy and I can let the county commission know that I'm the vote, or prior to that, gives them whatever. But I would certainly know if the planning commission can, can require the imposition of private restrictions. I don't, I don't think we need to do that.
Not conditionally, but, but let me put it a different way. I, I would expect that the county commission not approve this until they see that after all of these becoming so.
That's, that's kind of my thinking, when you, when you, uh, do restrictions, uh, right, so, uh, they, you know, you can, if you feel comfortable with it, and you feel comfortable with it on the first reading, the lack of, then you may want to approach it that, that it would be recorded prior to final reading, you may make that comment to the commission later.
Right, okay. Thank you, appreciate that.
Senator? Uh, we got, we got some business here, like, I'm sorry, uh, we have a gentleman. I apologize, sir.
My name is James Turner, I live in three oh one of Prosection Camp, pretty, uh, actually directed across from where this, uh, this property is located. And, uh, what I, this is what I just heard, and I'm kind of missing part of what I was talking about, is, I guess, a question I have is it legal to do what was just proposed, or we can limit the, the roads and the access so that we limit the number of properties or houses that go in that area, is that what I understood?
Uh, if, if the developer all stand up as a private restriction on the property, it would, I think, it would be something that the property would enforceable by then. And as far as the county, we can't enforce that necessarily, and so if somebody came down, I'm the worst case guy, everybody knows that about me, if somebody wanted to come in and do something different, uh, we've got to look at our zoning constitution and our subdivision regulations, and that's what we abide by.
What I think of it, the last meeting, uh, myself and some of the other folks in Liberty were pretty much for this proposal because we felt like it was the best of two evenings, I guess, uh, because we were up there assumption. Well, I went to the original meeting for Carrollton, and, uh, I feel like I remember speaking last week. I know originally that that was designated to pasture land for Carrollton. And since really nothing, nothing in Carrollton happened like it's supposedly going to originally, I assumed that this had already changed too. And I thought, I was on the assumption there'd be a lot of houses put in there, knowing, I didn't know as much about the flood plain there as I did now. I learned a lot from the meeting, but the thing that I understand the proposal was that if this proposal goes ahead, then what's shown on the paper anyway with the four or five lots is not necessarily what has to happen. It could be several different lots. And speaking of that, I'm, the, on the other side of Liberty Lane, there's three houses that sent them down. All three of those houses have had water in them, uh, several times, actually, I know at least three, I think there's probably more. And I know those folks have a concern is if, if this happens over here with more concrete or whatever, what's going to happen on that side of the road? It's a problem now, uh, and I don't know how that's, kind of, like this does not look like any better, but, um, or like the height, or so you said in the last meeting, that I thought was probably a better idea than this was, that we could actually change, uh, the PUD to, uh, reflect some of the changes within actually rezoning it. And by doing that, you would actually designate, uh, what we're actually going to get out of it in the end. We did it from the PUD, or did it on the PUD. But now I can, what I'm hearing, some of these proposals, sounds like they might, might do the same thing, so I guess, uh, if I, uh, feel, if I felt no conflict anyway, that's what we're going to line up, but I'd be for that proposal, I'm just a little unsure at this point, but, uh, I just, you know, appreciate anybody else says again, but, um, I appreciate this and that.
Thank you, sir. Is, uh, discussion now, uh, is there a motion to approve so we can discuss?
I'll make a motion for positive recommendation based off of, uh, what's been presented.
That, uh, I guess I. I'll second that. Okay, motion being made. Okay, discussion. Uh, so any questions? Any questions from the engineer, from the city engineer, from county engineer, again, or?
Just, just so I understand the process, we recommended it goes to the county commission to a subcommittee who votes votes on it. Once it comes out of that subcommittee, it comes to the county commissions for approval. And that was the conversation about the deed restrictions, whether they're replaced or not, it would be up to the county commission to make that decision at the time if this is approved or not. So really, we're just, we're going on, on a, on a little bit of faith here that the developer's going to execute all this, but the county commission could say no if they didn't get what they wanted with the deed restrictions.
Yes, sir. I think the county commission, you know, when you go to a rezoning, a little piece of property, uh, is, is very much always, to at least some extent, there's a lot of discretion there with the county commission. Planning commission, what you guys are charged with, you guys really aren't charged with looking at a set of private restrictions. You, you look at our policies and, and is this required, is it not required, and those are the questions.
Thank you.
Any other? All in favor of voting saying aye? Oppose? Vote to carry a cycle. Quick, we're not going to go ahead and say rezonement, staff.
Mr. Sheriff, the next item on the agenda is another rezoning request, AAA Auto Glass Incorporated, uh, resuming, uh, located on US thirty one W north of the White House City Limits. Uh, the subject property has six point four acres, is currently a rural residential. Uh, the request to rezone this piece of property to commercial general. Uh, the property number is Daniel Doris, uh, the project representative, that's where you're saying, who's in attendance here tonight. Uh, this property is located within the White House River Road boundary, uh, but it has, it has, has had a condition use permit, special exception as determined by state law, but it has been called a condition use permit in passing the county, uh, related to an all mode commercial use, that auto glass, uh, business has been, been operating there legally since two thousand seventeen. Uh, they've renewed the permit every couple of years, just like they've been required to do. Uh, it's, it's a legal conforming use of design. Uh, the New York property owners were notified about this rezoning, not certified, failed, uh, it was advertised in the Galveston, it's registered on April thirteenth. This is a public notice of, of the document. Uh, this is the subject property, and so if you look at it here, you can see this is thirty one W. You've got a driveway here, of course, there's pictures, I'll show them along driveway, uh, back to the big use, which is back here. Uh, and they are looking to, uh, their request before the planning commission is to rezonate this entire subject property, commercial general. Uh, this is, it's non-taxary, you see, it's, it's a lot of rural residential, uh, property, um, around it. On the other side of the line, I didn't have access to the zoning map put on here, but it's Robertson County on the other side of thirty one W. Uh, I think I've got a picture in here to show you, there's, there's a number of commercial uses, uh, located across the road, or close by, and on Robertson County side. Uh, there's a conceptual sketch provided by that, but all, all this is really is, is a block plan, then to show where the buildings are, and where the driveway is, setbacks, um, that, that's it. Um, what, what it checks is as far as proposed uses, so this is not a plan that develops, so we got to go for some of our training. This is a straight zone change, so they're looking to go for a rural residential, a commercial general, uh, which has a wide variety of allowable uses. And I'll show you what some of those are here in just a few minutes. Um, the purpose of the commercial general district, so what it is intended to do with the proposal, uh, this is from our zoning code, chapter two. Uh, the, the, this high district is designed, provides sufficient space in appropriate locations for industrial, commercial activities and certain supply line. Uh, various include, including retail, consumer personal services, auto sales, repair, entertaining, usually been used food services, transient sleeping accommodations. That sounds bad, but that has been so tell, that's all transient, so a combination, it's untell. Um, various office uses, administrative consulting services, warehouse, products, and the mill additional characteristics, limited industrial and assembly uses, and compatible services. Uh, the district should be well separated from residential areas. Um, and so when you, you look through, in our zoning code, we, we live by this, it's a beat right here. Uh, it tells us, this is, everything in here is either, uh, got an N to P or S E next to it. N means it's not allowed, uh, S E means special exception for horizontal vehicles, condition use permit, I was talking about. And P means it's allowed by right. And so when we look through administrative services, which is kind of offices, types of, uh, I'm not going through all these, but, uh, administrative services, things like, uh, accountants, that kind of thing. Uh, community assembly, those are big things, like churches, and they're classified by their size, uh, small, medium, large. Uh, cultural, cultural recreation services, palm fields, uh, extensive impact facilities. These are all those uses that are highlighted, they're either permitted by right, um, or, uh, at an S E submitting, they go to horizontal vehicles. And we have a set of conditions, uh, based on those, healthcare facilities. Now, and the commercial activities you expect, uh, all go to parking, all go to repair and servicing. So something they're doing here now is allowed, uh, construction sales and services, food, beverage services, a restaurant you go in here, um, drive-through restaurants, uh, commercial services, which might be anything from a repair, um, to, to, um, other uses that, that are, that are more, you know, drop something off and that kind of thing. And continued now, shoulders, general shoulders, uh, gas stations, those kind of things, um, hotels, as I said, um, vehicle sales, water gas sales, those kinds of things, undertaking, that's so, might be unlikely that, that they would do much undertaking, that would be a liable use. Um, agricultural sales and services is another one down here, that's, that's allowed, uh, rights of farm equipment and that kind of thing. Would, would, would be a, would be a liable use. So you said there's, there's a wide variety of allowable uses, and then this is a straight zone change, so that may differ from a plan that develops where the technical uses would usually be much, much better, and they've stuck out, and, 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 and a different level, uh, uh, they stuck out exactly what you should deserve in the post. So what is that in the, uh, in the county here, as I said earlier, is in the White House, um, White House River boundary, which is this, that, these, these angular areas, these yellow areas are our, our boundaries. Let's see where it is right here. Suburban place site. Um, photos of the subject property, you see, you can kind of, from, from the road here, you got a little way back here. One thing that's important to remember, this will be rezoned to commercial general, C G, which would, which would allow a portion of the property on the road. And should they so choose to like subsidize a lot or two off the frontage of this property in order to, to, to do different, different uses, a new subdivision and, and provide that the, uh, the use is allowed, they'll be able to do. And so that's one driving that there is that it's not rezoning just to do this, although it would certainly be allowed to continue to do the, the last repair. So there is property available for, for other uses. There's some photos here of, of the subject property that the staff went out to a few days ago. So we're carrying it back. So, um, we have our zoning map, the middle standards, there are nine other ones on the, this is up the planning commission and county commission. You're supposed to look at these when you're, you're trying to decide a rezoning is appropriate. It's not just what you, you just, you think or what you heard, uh, it's a good idea, and, and that, that actually session requires it to, to look at these nine standards and, and see how each proposal fits. And so number one is, does it comply with the hot plan? Yes, I, I would say it does, it's in suburban place site, uh, it's located along, uh, major, they're a very major, they're a very, they're a very, they're a very one thing. Um, and are there changed conditions that require amendment? Um, it has that permit to conduct this use since twenty seventeen. Um, essentially, they, they go two years at a time to the horizontal vehicles, and they want to formalize the commercial use of the property with the rezoning, um, which is something that, that, that's pretty common to store them. Does it address community need, uh, they, they indicate that there is a need for this, that's, that's a good question for Mr. Rain in property or, um, what, what's proposed, what need do they service it? Uh, is it compatible, uh, the uses surrounding it, or primarily residential, agricultural, but it says located on a major highway, and then it's set on the other side of the line, Robertson County, there are, uh, commercial industrial uses present. Would it result in a logical, overly developed pattern, or dedicated for land? Um, it would, it would allow a variety of commercial uses, which may or may not be more intense than the present use. As I, as I've showed you many others, uh, a few things that they did do, uh, again, on the other side of the road, there are warehousing, industrial plant uses on the other side of the road, Robertson County. Um, would it encourage development prior to the availability of services and infrastructure? Uh, water services, valuable, uh, the road network, this is thirty one W, which is a major, a road, and so we know issues there. Would it result in the creation of an isolated zoning district? Uh, and frankly, you would, on the, on the summer county side, there's not, not a lot of commercial uses in the immediate vicinity, uh, but if you look at this context, it goes down the other side of the road, there are several. Would it result in adverse impacts to property value use? Uh, in order, in order to make an determination on that, we have to have a appraisal turned in by somebody, we have not received any, any appraisal or expressed in the property this is, that would be the case. Uh, would it result in adverse impacts, and, and environmental and that kind of thing? Uh, would you not anticipate any, uh, any impacts that have to be mitigated with future restrictions? So if they did want to come in, subsidize a, a, a marshal along the road, um, the, they don't have to make any, any liberal stormwater cycling, uh, requirements. It kind of does have, uh, so all that may be addressed at that time. So next steps, obviously, this is important, this is the recommendation, positive, negative, it goes legislative after this, and the whole county commission. Uh, it's approved by the county commission, it will come effective immediately. Uh, and then if they want to do anything else, if they want to build more buildings or do anything like that, they go back to the planning commission on the cycling, which is a fully engineered document, showing exactly what they're going to build, and how they're going to manage stormwater, and every other landscaping, and all other, um, smite, uh, variety of things. So Sheriff, there's been motions on the screens, write a positive, uh, negative recommendation, or defer, and as I said, Mr. Rain, you said, please, sir.
Thank you. Uh, if this is a rezoning, you're right, the local public hearing. So if this one, I declare the public hearing open, the city will like to speak on this item, please come forward. So this is a going, a going to sign up, I declare that the public hearing is closed. Does the owner of this way, do you want to have any comments?
I'm Bruce Sharkey, I'm representing Kirkland last. Most of ours changed in the, uh, last year to start this process. Uh, I delighted, I was, we ran the, had a lax on the cycle, and I didn't want, I wanted a new commission, uh, to, uh, act on this, because it's what, or in their purview, anyway. Uh, this site has been used commercially. This site has been used commercially, my client bought it in seventeen, so it's six years, basically, been commercially, spent commercial taxes. And the person who he, they bought it from, used it commercially, from around two thousand forward till my client bought it. That was used, I mean, like, like, commercial taxes, it was. It is National World Church, a big, big church. I haven't had any calls from the, Mr. Garis, actually, this woman put up a warehouse, own property. And it suggested to him that with that county expenditure, he might want to come to this board and go to the county commission, I had a pretty sound. Though he can still, government board his only appeals, should this rezoning not be realized, he can still act like it was only appeals and continue that process, with possible, of course, not guaranteed, but anyway, I'd, I'd be glad to try to answer any questions. His idea is to keep going, just like he is, he has no, has totally any future plans of, 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 of the land, if warehouse, I'll be able to eventually, of course.
Please, of course, for Mr. Rainey.
Thank you, sir.
Actually, I'm sorry. My, my question is, he wants it done from rural residential to commercial. He, does he say that it's a conditional use permit, or is that indefinite, or?
So it's, it is an entitlement that runs through the property, and so it, it does transfer to future property owners, if this person that owns it now decides to sell it, the next person can take it over, essentially, they can only do what's allowed here. Now that said, if the horizontal fields, when they approve, they, and after several years, they impose a term of two years. And so every two years, that's to go back to the horizontal fields, and it's not necessarily for a demo approval, it's just to check it and make sure that nothing has changed, because they do have a property right there. After they've gone in and, and we go and, and take pictures, and they open a slaughterhouse there, and, you know, or, or something like that, then, then that would pay grounds for a vote of permanent, right? But as long as they're compliant with what they're originally approved to do, they can keep going.
How long is Mr. Garis on his property, three?
He bought it in two thousand, so.
Seven, seven, so, and he, he just wants to build a warehouse? Does he need the commercial zone to build the warehouse?
Yes, he needs it.
Okay. And what, what's going to take, what, is it just more for his class business, the warehouse, that's what he's going to be using?
To, to, go with the existing vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Warehousing is a, usually, usually it's not allowed upon a field for the horizontal fields, it is normally something that happens after reselling.
So that would be considered a conditional use?
They, we have to see exactly what they want to do, but typically warehousing is a heavy commercial, light industrial, light use, and the board generally can't approve light industrial uses by the horizontal fields, and that's normally what is happening to see.
Thank you.
You create a presentation, is Joe home?
I have a share on that question. Got a question?
Yes, please, I'm sorry.
Is the warehouse use, is that comparable to what's in the Robertson County side of this period?
It, it appears to be, and I don't know, I'm happy about that, I don't know what they're proposing, so I haven't seen exactly what, what all is, is actually proposed. And that's where if, if this zone is approved, when they come to the county for that, they're going to have to come back here for a cycling approval, or they're going to have to confirm that that use actually is allowed, whatever they're using this warehouse for, that it actually is allowed in the zone.
I asked that question because I'm just getting concerned with straight zoning this banner, because you saw a list of what could go there. You know, today it's a warehouse, tomorrow it could be whatever else is on the land used by them. It, it sounds like they're in good faith, trying to do the right thing, and it, it is long, you major core over, and mine is ultimately not going to be a residential, so I really don't have a problem with rezoning, it's just, it seems kind of backwards. If you brought the warehouse to us, I don't, I wouldn't have any reservations about proof of the warehouse.
Any other comments? Yes, sir.
It, it feels like to zone it, commercial general is, especially in that area right now, which is far inland and residences, might be a little premature. And, and here again, Josh, if, if, if he's just looking for a warehouse, i- is there any way around that, accomplishing that with the, with the conditional use permit that exists now?
I, I would have to, I'd have to, Mr. Rainey, really be a little bit more detailed about, on what they're wanting to do there, and the, the board probably has learned at this point, and here we talk about these rezonings, I don't think, in fact, in the development, certainly that process, it's a, it, 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 it sounds scary in the development, like it's a big, you know, well, patents, big thing, but, and, and metros, other places, they, they, S P is what they've got, special, special project, so it's like, sort of a, a project specific zoning, basically. And so if, if, if that's what they're wanting to do, then the planning commission won't box them a little tighter, and, and, and maybe, so, maybe they're not comfortable having all those different uses. Then that's something that the planning commission could say, well, this, we're not as comfortable with commercial general, but if you come back to us with a plan, with a development showing us just exactly what you got to do, we, we would be okay with that. That's, that's certainly something that, that the planning commission could, could do, and maybe Mr. Rainey, if we'll talk to him about that now, they might be willing to consider that, and kind of pack it up and, and, I don't know. But that's up to them, if they want to proceed with their application.
So would, would that, would our action be to defer, or?
It, it, it could, it, well, I can't, I can't tell you how, how about necessarily, but if you, if you guys wanted to see a different zone, and that, that's the point of this, this, this own recommendation is saying is, is this the appropriate zone for this area? That's really what the planning commission is being asked, is this, is this what the planning commission wants to see in this area?
Is there a dead period where we're like negative to this? I know some, some areas have got a twelve-month wait period, you can reapply.
So, so if, if, if it was the, and then the denial is at the county commission's level, right, if you have pulled now, you can come back, providing you receive a different zone change. So if, 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 if a commercial general does mention that now with the county commission, like, you certainly come right back with a planning of the development, the planning commission, if they want to. Immediately, but they can come back with the same zone change, they, they, they can turn the same thing over, over, over there, if, if they're asking.
Uh, Mr. Rainey, who's laying, okay, Mr. Rainey.
Thank you. I understand your discussions, I said before, this body, many, many years of it, have these same discussions. What I think I would ask on behalf of my client at this point, I've heard your debate, I understand your debate, and I understand your concerns. I think I would ask for a referral for thirty days, when we discuss with my client, I would want to confirm, could we come back for an S P zoning, or would you make it a?
The, the, the.
Okay. And when we discuss that with my client, and if that's, the way of the body. Question.
Thank you. That would be a special planning permission.
Well, that, that, that's your kind of big notice, is that for us?
Yeah, and I know this is not the time for us to discuss it, but for small projects, I think we need to work toward having a special plan, because a hood is very expensive. You know, and if, if we have a large development, commercial residential, you don't mind spending twenty-five, thirty-five dollars, but in an application like this, and I would, at the end, I would like to discuss us, charging Josh to look at that for these small projects. I think there was a better request to withdraw.
I think he might request to defer, something would be the action from the, from the planning commission.
Just a motion, just a second, to defer to necroregulable meeting?
One month, yes.
Well, the necroregulable meeting was maybe thirty days, okay. You know the motion, all effectively, please vote stand aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried.
And I have a question that it makes the time, and it's also, there's a risk of getting property, a house that, some of that the owner resides in, how does that play into the, the general commercial, as far as the rest is being part of the residence? Because naturally, if you rezoned it for, for five acres, you can rezon the house, and in some areas, you can't decide within, you know, you, all that, or how does that, just to give Mr. Rainey some guidance?
So, well, then the commercial general zone, it's not allowed use, so it's, it's, it's got an N next to it, a single family, any, any residential, it is allowed in the commercial general zone. And that said, I think it, it, the, the, it could be resold to that, and essentially grandfathered in, and, and, you know, eventually you have to try and find some way of eliminating that non-performing usage, unless you have another reason, somebody's living there, and that kind of thing, and maybe the commercial general, that kind of zoning is not as, as desirable. Because in Bud, you can put in whatever uses you want, and one of them could be a single-family residential, could be anything.
All right, thank you. So I've got a, a rezoning, county rezoning to deannex parcel, but Steph, comment?
Yes, sir. So this is one where I missed the, that, I mean, it's technically the county on this one, but, but, I don't mean this one to death, but what happened, and there's another one coming from the city of White House. But in this instance, the city of Billsville received a challenge, apparently to, they, they annexed a parcel a number of years ago, there was a former plan that was there. The, the owner challenged that annexation, that they didn't actually provide the consent, or the annexation went through, because it apparently got sold or something like that, there, and so the city looked at it, and felt like they'd got that point. And so they D N'd there, that they voted to deannex the property. And so because of that, county, you can't have a partial zone in the county somewhere that don't have any zoning, that could probably cause problems at some point. And so you want to, you want to apply zoning, the county has to go in partials, deannex, the county has to apply zoning to it. And so this piece of property was, it was deannexed, the city council, the city of Billsville voted a marsh life to deannex it, to give us enough time to get our ducks a row, they set an effective date of September the ninth, for the annexation to become effective. The property owner is freshman, or, 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 what the, the, the purpose of the resolution was, the planning commission's charge to do now is to assign a zoning for deannex partial, and that's, that's our zone, that is, that is a requirement. Our recommendation, because it's something that is, of the property nearby continues to be zone of rural residential, most of the county is zone of rural residential. It's, it's really not the zoning that fits, that we have, that, 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 that we're blocking for the partial. And so the county's advanced to receive this notification, and we notified that the property owner, if I certified mail, it was advertised in the Gout, and there's, there's still standing on April the thirteenth. This is their notice. This is our zoning code, chapter seventeen, seven, seventeen, oh, five, what it says, the following notification of the annexation, suburban county, it becomes part of the county's jurisdiction. And in order to make sure that it meets our planning requirements, the planning commission is required to recommend to the county commission a zoning classification within ninety days. And so it was a marshal, the city formally deannexed, and we're, we're, we're thirty days, within thirty days, we got something to the, to the planning commission here. And so the process is the same as any other rezoning. This is that following notification that our city official, the board, over at the city of Billsville, let us know, and they gave us a copy of the, of the, the resolutions, whether they deannexed. This is the subject property, as you see, it's a residential, this property, we've got some pictures here, just put it, put it in this context. City of Billsville, city of Hendersonville, unincorporated area here and around it. So the city is unincorporated, and the city is unincorporated, this is all zone, the county portions, it is zone of rural residential at this time. Over in all that, lowness here residential, I talked about before, that's the purpose of our rezon, it's in the suburban place site. Which is, is, is in our Row Bounder, one unit per acre, overall S E's, this would be less than that, I don't know why it's, anything in this property is part of that. This is the signage, this is the, the home, the city on the property, you see, it's, it's got a, a side of the yard. These nine standards, trying to sort through a time line, so that the, the county, is the plan was changed, it's been deannexed by the city, so we'd have to do something, the county does. As it may, it may be, yes, we have a need to resell every parcel in the county, and set up a jurisdiction, it is compatible with the comp plan, and with the, the uses around it. It's already developed, water service, services, like, of course, I wrote in front of it, local match, and other kind of negative impacts anticipated. Won't go through all those again, I think everybody knows what the steps are, but this will have to be handed fish in the next couple of months, and, for, for a vote. So there's positive, negative, or defer, those options for the, for the, for the side of the chairman, maybe I'll try to ask you a question, if you guys have any.
You know, just quickly, though, since this is a rezoning, it requires a public hearing.
Yes, sir.
So we were voting, of, of the public hearing at this point, is there anyone that's signed up to speak? So with that said, I'm voting public hearing, if you see owner has shown any, any input, either way, or else, or something.
No, sir, I, we have not spoken to him.
Please, of course, from the body. Entertaining motion to approve it?
Item one, motion made, proper substance, approve item one, is there any discussion being done, all the public, please vote stand aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries, thank you. Yeah, we need to just put these things off, the discussion in the middle, or, it doesn't matter, I mean, I know it doesn't matter, but, okay.
If you want, if the chairman wanted a pre-order, we'd do that, I might be a little late now, I should have done it on the, on my proof, it ended up.
Okay, uh, next item is the somebody kind of planning permission resolution, twenty twenty-three, oh, one, amended chapter four, section four, for the county zoning resolutions related to borough lot sizes. Steph?
Yes, sir. And, and so, and, and, thanks for your question, when we did the, the rezonings, and thanks for the public hearing at the top, that, that, this actually made a whole bunch of them tonight, they usually go before all the plans, and that's, so. Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is a, a, another stat initiated, item, and we've had a number of conversations with the, with the planning commission, through three separate sessions, on, on potential changes to the county zoning resolution related to provisions of the zoning code for lots that either don't have access to public water, or that do have access to public sewer, and so I'll talk a little bit more about that here in just a second. This is the public notice for this item, that was advertised in the newspaper on April thirteenth. So as the county's regulations apparently written, in general, across most of the county, there's forty thousand square foot minimum lot size, it's been that way since nineteen seventy-three, so fifty years now. It's been established forty thousand square foot of minimum lot size in, in most of the county. But, but that said, the minimum lot size does vary, depending on infrastructure, that's valuable, and what's like infrastructure, I mean, public water, public sewer. So at this time, if public water is not available, some of the ways that don't have access to public water, the minimum lot size is, is eighty thousand square feet, so it goes from forty thousand to eighty. On the other hand, if you're in a more urbanized area, and public water and public sewer are both available, the minimum lot size decreases, so it goes down to half acre, which is twenty-one seventeen square feet. What this change would do is twofold, the first thing would be, if you don't have access to public water, and that might be as a result of the water line not being there, or the utility won't, won't let you tap off the water line, or there's a moratorium. If, if any of those are the case, if you can't demonstrate through a, a water, a little bit later, that you have water available for certain lots, the minimum lot size would go from eighty thousand square feet to five acres, which is two hundred seventeen thousand eight hundred. Set back for the remaining, all, all the changes, it's just that minimum. Set back to remain the same, all, all the changes, it's just that minimum lot size. And so if water isn't available, um, five acres is as small as you can go. And that keeps, um, when I talk about this, uh, keeps the planning commission from getting in the business of developing lots with no infrastructure available anywhere. And, and, and usually, uh, there are exceptional circumstances, but usually, uh, if you don't have access to public water. Um, you're in part of the county, that probably is a good candidate, uh, to, to develop. I think that's, that's a reasonable assertion, uh, you're not approved by part of the county most of the time, uh, when that's the case. And so from eight thousand square feet to five acres, uh, the changes would have the effect of discouraging development where services are not available. Uh, encouraging a very separation homes, um, where, you know, high population, where, um, you know, it, it probably encourages more of a rural type atmosphere. It might discourage development at all in some of these areas, until water, both services become available. Um, and alternatively though, it could have the effect that some ways of encouraging developers and property owners to run water lines or develop property. And so that, that costs money, and usually it's either the county or state or somebody that will pay that or development. Uh, those are the folks that will run, that run the water lines. And so if I encourage development to take care of that, it's some circumstances. The next change that we propose is, is related to that lot size reduction. Um, and so whatever they do, it would just eliminate that lot size production in our R zone. She wouldn't be able to reduce down to a half acre anymore, and the minimum lot size would just be forty thousand square feet. Uh, regardless of whether you have public sewer or don't have public sewer. Uh, and, and so again, set back to remain the same they are. And so the, the purpose that actually changes is, is right here, so you have all of this stuff here. Uh, R, rural residential, minimum lot size here, forty thousand square feet. Uh, and our variable lot size, working here, all of a sudden by half acre reduction, uh, that would just go away. And so that doesn't exist anymore, but they're verbalized. Um, and then where water service is not available or doesn't meet requirements. Again, it goes from eighty thousand square feet to five acres, which is two hundred seventeen thousand eight hundred square feet. Um, this is a text amendment, and so just like any other zone change, it goes to the legislative committee. It is recommendation, I should say, first thing it does is a recommendation from the planning commission, it goes to legislative and the full commission for a vote. Uh, if the county commission approves it, it will become effective immediately. So, Mr. Chairman, there's, uh, there's a motion to the screen, and I think I've, I've made a, uh, I think I made a, a, a. Top over here, but positive twice. What I'm trying to say is make positive recognition or negative recognition, the lighting question.
And this item also requires, this item also requires public hearings of this one, I think you could have public hearing closed. Is there anyone that would like to speak on the side of?
Yes, sir.
On the side of?
Mr. Calhoun.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Calhoun entry to civil land, county one seventy East Main, Hendersonville. Uh, I just, uh, I had some questions about the change.
Can we start? Okay.
Uh, I just had some questions about the change, uh, the lot size reduction. I understand completely the, the reasons for going up to the five acre lot size. We don't have public water, and it makes sense for all reasons stated, but I didn't understand the reason for eliminating the lot size reduction. Um, part of the lots are, I understand there may be, we have septic systems required. Um, uh, but where you have access to, to public sewer, I believe it's part of the yard. Um, and the issue is smaller lots out of the county, I think all the areas where sewer is available. Uh, so where this order's provision to use is in unexplored, unexploited areas, kind of inside city limits or adjacent to city limits where sewer is kind of immediately available. Um, there's not an opportunity to do smaller lots out of the county, because there's just, uh, there's not public sewer. Um, the lot size reduction allows you to hit, uh, the one unit per acre, lot density not exceeded, of course. Uh, but it still allows you room to provide open areas for stormwater, uh, maybe do things like that. And allows you to spread the cost of long-term infrastructure maintenance across more homes, uh, set up as. Uh, I think the end result of this change, uh, is a reduction in lot density there already in urbanized areas. I think that promotes sprawl. Uh, as homebuyers look to, have to look further out for lots, because we have to put, uh, you know, bigger ones in close. And I don't think this whole change will reduce the number of new homes, any lots built and developed in Southern County. I think it'll just force them further out, um, into the county, and it takes, it takes one way to deliver the same number of lots. It could make our road more expensive, maintain the state. Lastly, uh, I think this change reduces the value of the land in effect. I think, uh, the houses that, the land that has access to public sewer, uh, that can be sold for a higher value currently. And if that right is taken away from them, that they won't be able to sell for as high value. Uh, I think the current one provides some flexibility if you develop closer into urban areas instead of going out. But mainly, as I say, I'm unsure, because I don't understand the reason for the change. Uh, I don't see a benefit for residents of Southern County associated with eliminating the choice of lot size. That will further promote sprawl, uh, for the unintended consequences of this order of change. If we study further, uh, before this, uh, change, thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Okay.
So with that, I've heard the public hearing closed. Uh, is any discussion from the members?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just make a comment. I agree with the speaker during the public hearing, I think all this is going to do is force the areas closer in. Uh, that are already more dense, they're going to be annexed into the cities. We're just going to push more county property into the city's, um, world than we're actually going to deposit or going to allocate. Again, that, but that's just my opinion, and I don't want to share that with the party chair.
Is there anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I'd like to address, as a commissioner, um, I knocked on over a thousand doors. I had at least six hundred and fifty conversations. Things have changed radically in this county since nineteen seventy-three. I, I was not here, but I was here in nineteen ninety-eight. And when things change as radically as things have in the county, sometimes we have to change the way we're doing things. Uh, I've talked to, uh, the mayor of Gallatin, I've talked to many people who still live in the belief that we need to grow. That's not the consensus of District Six, certainly. And in conversations with, uh, my colleagues, most of my colleagues on the commission, that's not the consensus in their districts either. The, the reason for the half acre lots was for higher density. Uh, because you could with a sewer system. And our problem now is that we do not have the infrastructure in the county to support the roadways. We don't have the infrastructure for schools. We're a county that is upwards of four hundred million dollars in debt, and we are, we are taking that down. But we, as a county, are responsible for all new schools. And with what the City of Gallatin has on the books right now, we will need probably three more school systems the size of Liberty Creek. If that system is two hundred million dollars, only another six hundred million dollars. At some point, we very possibly could be bankrupt. And so, one of the things we know about residential units in the county. For every dollar we collect in property taxes, we spend a dollar a quarter. That is a problem. So with every house we build, we're losing tax revenue. So the intent, or one of the intents here would be to encourage commercial, possibly industrial. While slowing down the residential, but we do not have the infrastructure for at this time. This is a real problem, and it gets into many more involved things that we have discussed at, at the commission level. And we have not discussed at the planning commission. One of the problems is the two thousand and six County Power Relief Act, which is, was implemented for the purpose of encouraging growth, discouraging any kind of impact fees on new development. However, when you logically look at new development, if there is infrastructural changes that need to happen. Those infrastructural changes should be, the, the burden should be borne by the newcomers who come into the area. Because for those of us who already live here, if there's no growth, there's no increase in infrastructural changes. So, this is part of a plan to encourage the slowing down of growth until we can make some other changes within the county. And frankly, all counties in the state are facing this problem. The fact of the matter is, we don't have the ability to fund the infrastructure that is required by most developments. But certainly high-density developments. So I would strongly encourage a positive vote on this particular issue. At least to get it to the legislative committee for the, for the two hearings, and then the commission. It's essential that we maintain our ability to pay for the infrastructure we're responsible for. And at this point, I would like to, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, is there another? I have one question, uh, and I know if it's, if everything proceeds without any delays. Who would be the earliest that this provision would be approved?
So we're, they were writing down for the planning commission, uh, the legislative man, and the full commission chief?
So would be Jim. And the reason I ask that each time, because I, I affect myself, and I always think about it. It's for the people that have something in the interim, uh, that money's been spent. Uh, because she said, basically, resolution's going to stay immediately. So I guess June immediately is going into, into effect, if it's approved. My question, is there anything on the board, is there any projects where people have, you know, you know, because if they spent some funds. They, they have some rights there, so we want to, we want to be knowledgeable about that, if, if you, do you know what we?
Well, we had, uh, we've had a couple of state plans that have been turned in. One of them, the, the board member, uh, the legislature member had a, he got a denial a few months ago. There'd been a, one or two others that, that were submitted, but that had basically been, uh, I think, determined that they, they offered was, uh, indefinitely deferred. And so it'll be, that's a withdrawal, so I don't think we have, I feel a little bit of, I don't think we have, what I was on an active application at this time.
So there's no projects where you feel like the practitioner is fiscus?
No, well, there, uh, there, there are projects that, that have received a preliminary plan approval under these provisions. And that are looking to go to construction probably this year, as to when they're approved. And so those, those properties, one of them is so recent, uh, that was approved on, uh, something that, um, that, that particular project was approved under these provisions. And they have a vested property right for, for state law. And so they're, they're, they're free to proceed with construction, because they got a rule under several, so they can do that. And, and they have to have my own construction plans and permits and all those things that they have to do. And so they're vested for three years. Um, that's the only one I can think of off the top of my head. I think we may have had one or two other, like, two lots subdivisions that came in somewhere, but, but nothing that requires new, new preliminary construction, I can't think of.
You don't understand the question, because if a person's in the middle of something, I don't think, I think you might see a pass, uh, to body off, but not catch someone in the middle where they, you know. So basically, that there's nothing there based on just, just a, a quick look that, that would affect anyone. And, and still, they would be off to June if it were to proceed, uh, for everyone to, so they get the ducks in order, like, get this new resolution passed.
Right.
That was my question, so again, is there, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, number one.
Okay, Ms. Miller, as well, second, uh, second motion, is there any other discussion? Being on, all of the, the vote, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Opposed.
Roll call.
Three ayes, one negative.
Well?
Aye.
Aye.
One, two, aye?
No.
No, okay, motion carried. Okay, next item. Some kind of a, a, a resolution, twenty-three, a resolution for a mandate, or I read it in chapter ten, section one zero, zero, five, county's own, uh, the resolution. Steph comments, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, this is another, uh, item that's been discussed, the same as we're in the planning commission, uh, it's been discussed in previous, uh, separate sections. Uh, this one is related to, uh, Southern Resolution, which is related to finished floor elevations. Uh, contained chapter ten of the county Southern Resolution, which starts flood hazard reduction, uh, section. This is the public notice, the same one, it's, was advertised for the, the last one. Um, so just, I'm not going to, uh, spend too much time on all this, um, but as far as, when I talk about floodplain and this kind of stuff. This is the kind of thing that can make folks out of these planes over until they have to deal with it, and then it gets really complicated and, and expensive. And so, so when we talk about floodplain, there's different, different things there. What I, what, when we talk about floodplain, what that is, is this area, the theme, as I said, has a substantial flood risk. Um, and so the county participates in the National Flood Insurance Rate Program. And communities in the state of this year are required to adopt standardized regulations, and that's a requirement to participate in that program. And then you have to actually do the hard part, which is enforcing them every day. And, and, and our marshal, your county engineers, our floodplain administrator, does a phenomenal job of this. I get very few complaints, also never complaints. Because it's, like I said, it's, it's about a marshal, it's all, all the requirements. And, and so that's, that's our job, is actually enforce those, those requirements that the, the Fed essentially gives us to adopt. Um, so, uh, the floodway, what that is, we'll talk about floodway, that's this channel right here. Uh, this is the area that some of the county commissioners might have, might have seen recently. Uh, this is the flood, floodway, that's, this is, uh, the channel, if you're, if you can't do it, or if you can't do anything in it, it's essentially a green space and a reserve. Uh, domain E is what people used to call the one hundred year floodplain. Uh, it's where there's a one percent or greater chance of flooding each year. Uh, that's domain E, and it's a big, a big flood elevation established, which means we know that the, the one hundred year floodplain is at, or, or, is at, uh, X number of feet above sea level. So the technical floodway is exactly where it is. Um, so, hey, on the other hand, this area over here, this yellow area, that's not that. We know that it's an area of flood, flood hazard, um, it's a one percent or greater chance of flooding each year. Um, but we don't, but, but it's not the next study discussion, this is, so we don't know just exactly where everything is. Um, and so in this area, we know where the flood elevation is, let's say it's four hundred sixty feet above sea level. That makes you got, your, your first waterhouse has to be one foot above that. Over here, it has to be three feet above the, 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 it's a little bit more complicated. Um, to the county commissioners on, on, uh, that are here this evening, it would be a really good idea, in my opinion. And so I talked to marshal, uh, a moment about, um, for the county to spend a little bit of money each year to map these areas. And to turn these yellow areas, where we don't know exactly where everything is, right where we did. And if a little money is set aside here, we can chip away and put that across the county and make everybody a lot safer. It costs a lot, it costs money, but it did something, do something that we could do, and we could get funding from the federal government to fix it. But it'd be great that address there. Um, so to go back to this, and it's domain E, everything has to be one foot above that base of the elevation. Um, this blue area has no regulatory basis, um, and floodplain development, apartment, to do anything in this area, you have to get apartment from marshal. Uh, what is our floodplain administrator, and, and, and you have to do everything he says you have to do within the regulations. And so, uh, from time to time, the, the feds and the state folks come down and tell us we have to adopt all these things, and it's, you know, it's, it's kind of, just, they give it, they give you, you have to adopt it. But that said, you do have a little bit of, of flexibility, uh, with, with the regulations, if you want to be more strict than what the bare minimums are. Because they, they said, what they give you is the minimum, you have to, um, one of the minimum standards requires that all new construction in that A E zone, which is, which is this, this red zone right here. Um, and then that red zone has to be one foot above the A E, the base of the elevation. Uh, that's the absolute minimum standard, and many jurisdictions are associated, here's that minimum, that's fine, there's, there's nothing wrong with that. Uh, we've done it for years. Um, but many jurisdictions, uh, and especially since one ten, uh, we had mega floods in the middle of Tennessee, and there's been more frequent flooding. And storms are more intense probably than they were in the past, and there's all these other issues, um, development and that kind of thing. Um, many jurisdictions have, have started. Many jurisdictions have started going over above that one foot requirement. What's proposed here this evening, and with this champion, would be that new construction within that A E zone would need to be three feet above the base flood elevation within the corporate area of the county. Because those are the bottom cities, they have the minimum standards. And so, when we look across the county, this is what I'm talking about here, we won't get as much into this. We're not, we're not going to change anything in that A zone, from that A E zone where it's mapped. You see, how about the A E, Frank under the bars, three feet above, Galton one, November County one, Rutherford County three, Wilson one, Portland one, Marshall two, Billis two, White House actually, the bars four, feet above the base flood elevation. Henry's over the bars two, and Metro Nashville over the bars four, above the base flood elevation. And so, the only changes that are being proposed with this particular resolution are right here. So, in A E zones for residential structures, they'd be three feet above the base flood elevation. And similarly, non-residential structures would need to be three feet above the base flood elevation. And that's, that's the changes that we're probably. When Mr. Chairman, Marshall, the county engineers here, Ben Fins tonight, he can, he can speak to this. If you guys have some specific questions, you know, we'll take them, but if you're asking me to make a recommendation, same as the last one, either positive recommendation or negative recommendation, recommendation or the further.
Thank you. This slide requires a public hearing also. Say the one, wait, sign up.
Okay, I hope the public hearing closes because of someone here to speak. Can I get the discussion from the body? Is there any?
Just ask for clarification.
Yes, sir.
Now, just to make sure everybody understands what we're asking for on the three foot. The three foot is to the, from the A E elevation to the finished floor. I want to be clear that a lot of people get confused that they think the foundation of a house, the foundation of the structure, the structure footprint, we're talking about the finished floor or your threshold on your first floor, first living floor, is that, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
I just want to make that clarification, a lot of people get confused that they think we're talking about the actual foundation or the footprint of home, finished floor. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a second, is there any other discussion? Being on all the votes, two votes saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, multi-carriers, thank you. Chief, very, very sketchy, but Steph comments, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, this is a proposed sketch flat affecting 19 residential development lots across 110 acres. Overall density, this proposal on this, you can't really down to 20 or 5.8 acres. Located on Brager Lane, Zone Royal Residential, owned by several people. I don't know if I got everybody on there, but the Elson family and Mary were, are listed as owners. The project surveyor was by Volger, and the project engineer is bringing in design. They're simply utilizing the rural state road cross-section, which the planning commission member is a road cross-section that allows the road to be a little narrower, the lanes to be a little narrower, and find as much infrastructure as far as curb, gutter, sidewalks, or anything like that. Essentially, in exchange, there's a minimum lot size of those of 100,000 square feet. And so, the home lots within this development, they range from 100,000 square feet, which is that demo I was talking about, to, they range up to, that's 1,122,000 square feet. So, 6.3 acres to 25.7 acres. Water service is provided by White House Utilities, they have provided a water availability letter from the utility. This, I learned the step system that they're in our training is not the proposed, or it's not the preferred, not the culture. It's a decentralized water treatment facility, is what's proposed for this one. And we've got a letter in the package from Tennessee Water, who would be the utility that would service that decentralized system. The reason for that, and I can defer to that, is represented, but essentially, a lot of this is from the park. And so, they had common areas for centralized soils for the lots here. One note, this sketch plan provides the planning commission with information, and I can input to that when they come back with the preliminary. There's no vested property rights contained, in this case, by several of the preliminary plats, those contained vested property rights. This is an area of view with the floodway line turned on, what I was talking about earlier, those that yellow there means A zone A E, approximate. So, there's creek that does run along the road here, that runs the property. This is the sketch plan, and it's a big, big plan, been very big piece of property. The scale is, is a little bit arbitrary, so I kind of zoomed in a little bit. You can see, there's 19 lots overall, they range, this is an 8.9 acre lot, this is a seven acre lot. Biggest of them are two, three acres, and they're not little, and those are big lots in this scheme. You see this step drainage field, this show right here? This is the entrance off Brager Lane, very important entrance for both of these here, for the 19 total lots. This is moving over on the west side of the development. You see, a secondary step drainage field is over here. I don't know if this is a secondary field or both we will utilize all the time. I wouldn't think I'd do that point yet on the design of this subdivision. These, these lots, again, the 2.6 acre lot here, four acre lot, there's a bigger lot back here. Obviously, you can see there's some rare to steep demographic issues back in here. This is a 25.7 acre lot back here. This is about 10 acre lot here. Summary of it, as far as utilities and fire protection, our subdivision regulations do require multiple fire hydrants for developments such as this. That said, White House Utilities has indicated that fire hydrants cannot be provided at this location. There's a four-inch line along the road, they just draw Brager Lane. You can't, you can't connect hydrants to a, to a line that's small, it's not big enough. The subdivision regulations, this is how they do allow for the dedication of equipment amount to the volunteer fire department. That's been something that's been done in the past. So, if, for instance, you needed to put three hydrants in or five hydrants, the planning commission has accepted $3,000 per hydrant dedicated to the volunteer fire department for new women and that kind of thing, as an end to the woman panel. Women and husbands on a, on a development such as this, they saw it very far apart. They should not watch for houses that back together. And so, hydrants aren't critical as they would have been in a planning development or something like that, or we just can't get, get by without them. As far as roads, the project will involve installation of a new county road using that rural state cross-section I was talking about. It will require the construction of a bridge over the, over the creek that I was talking about, along Brager Lane. Setting construction plans will be required at the preliminary plat stage, so they'll have to review it and provide a county engineer. This development will require those covers from T D A, I think there's a couple of streams and that kind of thing as well, that the road will traverse, but I think A R X, acquiring resource operation permits for those. Comprehensive plan shows this at the rural place site, which tells her overall density's at about five acres. As I said, this is 5.8, I think, what the number was. That's right, right in here, that's Brager Lane, and so, it's just to the south of Brager Lane and north of the Galton, Rutherford County. Rural place site, very limited, it would be willing to provide five acres. That rural state cross-section, it allows the developer to reduce that road size from 22 feet to 18 feet. And that's obviously not intended for major thoroughfares or anything that's going to have connectivity. But we decided that that's adequate for a country of on-plain, rural on-plain, kind of same, which is what was proposed, they've got to develop. Next notice, if this is approved by the planning commission this evening, they need to come back with preliminary planning construction plans. Once those are approved, they need to hit the road in and everything, and then they come back to the, the final plan, the planning commission actually plats lots. So, Mr. Chairman, there's an example motion, don't turn in there to approve, to approve it without conditions or to deny it, whether the, we may try to cite specific areas with the county subdivision regulations to back up that denial. The example motion's to approve, we have conditions A and B. A is just, we need the church plans, which is a planning requirement for, for all sketch plans. And B would be all the terms and conditions related to the rural state road cross-section will apply. So, I would love to try to answer any questions, Mr. Elson, his evidence here this evening, and Mr. Volger, the surveyor's evidence as well.
You don't, representative, have any comment at this time? Your staff's comments?
Because, Chairman, I guess it was very timely that we had a workshop to be performed live, talking about step systems. If I took away anything from that, it was that, that we should be very careful about our own regulations. And I would ask maybe Josh Suthas to address how fast we could. I don't want to slow down this project because I really like it. On the other hand, I don't want to have our second step system in the entire county be a disaster. And so, how fast could we make our own regulations for step system? I guess would be my question.
Well, I remember we're in this other step system regulations, but I don't know, I believe we did. But I think we did, we did what, and, and, and any government employee in the regulation, there's no layers of the local government, so what we do is we're involved with the regulation. And so, probably what we would do is we would look at, he knows my brother for county, he has a great example of another entity. What we do, essentially, and it is, this resolution was I don't think made in that we said was to help defend L T D to, basically, you know, that's the story that was supposed to surprise them from the state of Florida. But, but it was brought to first share. And so, what we probably would want to do is to, to try to find some kind of regulations that can be adopted by the planning commission and, and reference, essentially. I mean, it would be worth those, maybe go rock in the subdivision regulations, I would have said. And so, it probably wouldn't take that long, because like I said, what we're going to do is with weeks, there's, you know, to get it going tomorrow. And so, it wouldn't take long to get something together. And then, given the subdivision regulations, we'll take a long process, we have to advertise it and all that. So, probably a couple of ones, we can turn something around.
Yes, sir.
I'm talking about the surveyor of the project, and you saw two sites on the sketch plan. We've already went beyond and tried to find an extra backup system. So, one of those will be used for all that T lots, and the other will be backup. That will be determined by the engineer firm, but we did find the two locations, just, just for that purpose.
Thank you. What's, what's the thought for the body? Does that remediate some concerns? Are you, what's, what's, what's the wheel?
I'm, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll go along with that, I'm not a fan of these systems. Again, as long as the engineer is telling us correctly, I'm very confident in it. My problem is the execution over the years, to who operates the unintended set system? I'm all for looking at regulations for, I think that would be a very pertinent for this body to do. Answer to that problem, Josh, could you go back a couple of slides in, with the easement crosses and property? The lot right there at the cul-de-sac, or before you get to the cul-de-sac. I mean, I know a large, large lot, but there's, that one lot looks like it's all easement with just a little bit there in the back. Is that? Is that a lot that y'all are considering building? I mean, that's not a concern.
That's, they're the pre-act for this one, we, we discussed some of those issues, this aren't slow, particularly on this. We're not to the same extent where they're going to be like an incredible lot, that's, that's definitely going to be one. You can see those, I think those might be, those are five-foot lines there, as we've heard. And so, it, that's definitely going to be one that's going to have a star on it, that maybe that thing is a critical lot where we're going to have to have an individual building point on it. It helps that it's, it is on a step system, so it's essentially on a super system, so we don't have to figure out where to put the safety tank and all that stuff, is a big problem there.
With this being a sketch flat, and if we did move forward with a, some kind of regulation for these kind of systems in the future, how does that, how does that put them in the world? Are they, are they going to meet the new regs? Are they going to be vested?
I would say that now, what we, we would work with them, and I'm sure Mr. Elson would be willing to work with the county, I'll have. Nothing, they're vested, they're not vested at all with this, with this principle that we can change. And I'll say, we, the county, the planning commission, the county commission, whoever, whoever put on it, could change whatever rule, and he has no vested property rights. That said, I like to be transparent, you know, about what we're working on and that kind of thing. But I would, I would want to work with them to make sure that the step system requirements that we get in place, we can get those in place, either at the same time or prior to this, I'll come back with the preliminary plat. They have that construction plans drawn and under other items, so that might be a little, I don't really can do that. But that's something I'd be a question, Mr. Elson, his rights.
Do you have? The other question I have is, did the backup field, elevation-wise, how was that compared to the first one?
The one in the rear there that you're seeing, you might get it. The one in the rear you're seeing there is higher than the one in the front. The one down at the front and the other side is a nice bottom with really good soil. And this is also the bottom, there are all those clanks off of those fields there. You can see it's a little collection in the bottom there, and the soil's really good there. So, but that elevation is actually higher than the other one.
My concern, originally asked the question, is if you have to go to the secondary field, for example, or would the county then be on the hook to rip the road up and put lines in so they could be pumped to the secondary field?
One thing I did want to clarify is that there's essentially not going to be a certain stance where the county is on the hook for anything with it. So, the, the utility will be Tennessee Water, which A D N S is their kind of operating arm. The utility of Tennessee Water, which is a private utility that's licensed to the state. And so, when the gentleman did their, did our study session, we're talking about rate payers have to pay for all that stuff. So, they made a system all over the state. And so, if this thing fails and something happens, they've got to go and put them in line or something. Their own rate payers are going to pay for it. Residents of Southern County that don't live amongst the step system are not going to pay for it.
Andrew, my question is, thank you.
Also, Josh, we, we, this farm was approved by the Davis for 30 lots, and we're only 19. So, and as far as the lots where the T B A right-of-way runs through, the two triangle-shaped lots, just to the left of the entrance, actually acreage-wise was four lots. But we didn't, we didn't like what that left for building sites. So, we, we turned four lots into two. And that, that last lot in the cul-de-sac that you were talking about, there's actually, that's actually a pretty good-sized lot, and the T B A use only takes, takes up less than an acre of it. Okay, I'm, I'm telling you also.
I apologize. And you'll be, you'll be owner?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that.
I have a question. So, Josh had a slide about, does this have access to sewer? If they're choosing not to use the sewer, are they exempt from?
No, ma'am. So, the, the, normally, where this is, where this is located, we'll be able to say individual safety tanks. So, you can form that a safety tank. But the property, and I don't want to speak, I think they looked at it and tried to get a small amount, as they could.
Is that what they did?
It didn't work, that's right. And so, they found areas for the step system. Which, if you, you know, when you go to the parts of the county, whether that's east Tennessee, like Josh talked about earlier, Rutherford County, Wilson County, Rutherford County, Wilson County, they're essentially a big rock. They just have little pockets of dirt here and there. And so, that's why they like step system so much down there. Southern County is mostly dirt or a little bit of rock. And so most of Southern County is dirt just fine, but this particular property didn't, and so they had identified a place to do the step system.
My next question is, my concern would be flood area, the creek, the step system and a bridge going down the creek. That's a lot of factors playing in. I mean, I like the larger lots and I like the design concept, but is this going to be an issue and you're going to have a bumpy pond like we thought we saw earlier in the study session? This is my question.
And to start, Mr. Bollinger, was it, you know, how they looked at the justice or the drain field and flood line and those kind of things?
We made a contact with the DMS about that, they said it was no problem. The bridge will be engineered to cover it if, if it is, you know, a bridge that will be engineered on it.
Where's that integrity bridge?
You see the yellow, you see the yellow, yeah, right there. Instead of coming up the existing, there's an existing farm right there. I don't know if you're aware of, familiar with this property, but it's got beautiful views. It's beautiful up on top of the hills and stuff. And that's a slowly grave farm road that drives us a lot, floods on it pretty quickly. So, you know, the road will pretty much stay, rather like the yellow small ski elevation comes down following the farm road. And then it'll have the T road off each way, get up on top for the views. Like I said, their proposal is to make this a really desirable upscale development. Try to put nicer beer homes on there. I think there's maybe a three thousand for minimum requirement.
I'm assuming that's, I never knew that far.
Yeah, no, we are, we've done a lot of work on this project. The DMS is, there's no problem. One in the bottom there, the one you're talking about, sort of about flooding the DMS system there, it's probably going to be the secondary. And one in the back here, the one into the south will probably be the original where all of those too first. So, and I developed the DMS system once I was before in Marverson County. And projects been there probably, I know for twenty-five years, I had no problems out of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. What's the will of the body? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the sketch plan. With number one with conditions, is there a second?
A second.
Most would may profit second to approve item one with the conditions. Any questions?
We would add a condition that says any, trying to think of a word, any, any requirements the county, that knows is related to step system shall apply or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, I guess condition C would be that any subsequent requirements on the step system prior to final approval?
Before prior to the preliminary class, hopefully.
Prior to preliminary class shall be adhered to.
It's the, so would you say any that?
It's a condition safe up there.
Do you want to speak to that or is it called?
Was that, that we have a, any other step system regulations?
The reason I'm doing this because what I was just saying, I mean, like, I think it's all.
These are Tennessee wastewater anyway.
Okay, all right, I feel it's not something sprung on him, it's he and I can't hear.
No, it's good.
Okay, so I need a motion to amend, wanting to withdraw your first and withdraw your second. And then make the motion to include everybody, is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay, I have a motion to approve this with the item that's been added, is there a second? Most have been made seconds, any questions? Being an honor, if ever please vote for saying aye, oppose, or who cares? Okay. Item seven, ELL division preliminary class, step topic.
Yes, sir.
This is the final that we have.
Yes, sir.
The commissioner, several folks speak about.
Yes, sir.
There's still experience to speak.
I think it's like we want to spend the rules and I know there'd be one gentleman that wants to be with Marshall or something, so maybe after, if the commissions are there.
No, in that what we asked because, okay, so do you want to just go ahead and do that?
Let me, let me do that presentation, I mean, I'm going to put in context for everybody and.
Well, thank you.
I did the presentation I want, I want me to go over here, I'm sorry. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is a request for a catch case from here, always the type of lead from the last one. So this preliminary class is what was before the planning commission right now. So the preliminary class contains twenty-one residential building lots, four lots, common open space. The development contains thirty-two point two acres, local, four street road. Some rural residential owned by Adline, I love see, the director of engineering is WNA engineering. Other water secondary super services are both supervised by the water supply district. It's located in Hendersonville, Grove Country, suburban place site. And our Grove Country thing in twenty seventeen will be annexed by the city here, so if one in the future should, should the property or petition them to, the city agree to that. Sketch plan was approved for the property by the planning commission in July of twenty twenty-two. And this came before the planning commission last month in March, and it was deferred at that time. During that interim period, we had a lot of emails with residents, there's some counties here particularly, it's been residents outfield. And seven numerous discussions with developers, engineers, talking about the comments of the plan, and I mentioned that part. And he sent comments over to us about the construction plans and they did their responsibility, we're thanking for that, for getting comments back to us and responding to the questions that we had. This is the project location in its context here, this is the city of Hendersonville, the gray area here, and this is the subject property. Again, this is an area view of the subject property. This is the original sketch plan that was approved. At the time, they were willing to perhaps bring in about thirty, I forget, thirty-four lots initially. This piece of property has since sold and they're not looking at doing anything with it anymore. But they're just looking at this base. So the sketch plan that was submitted is the preliminary they come back with is less than ten or less, less than her for number lots. Preliminary class, just to run through these, this is the cover sheet. This is the overall side layout, so you can see the lots, one through twenty-one, as you go around the development. There's certain areas here and here and here with common open space that's been set aside where you have, you have streams and then other natural features like that that need to be, need to be reserved as open space. That's a lot of like down here in solution. This is the utility layout, this shows where water zero lines and that kind of go. This is the grade slope analysis, you can see there are some steep slopes, darker areas, there are areas where the slopes are a little deeper. See along these edges right here, the slope analysis that's showing there, I believe that has reflected those some grades that they want to do. To put some swales in there to break water away from these lots by them. They did turn in a landscape plan, and I'll talk a little bit about what it does and how it is, is a, kind of like start regulations there in just a second. These little things here, those are trees and shrubs that they're posting on the rear property lines. Kind of zoom in a little bit, they've got it speciated out, so there's all the different species, first trees and other, other, I'm saying they probably get into details of exactly what they're proposing. Started things, I don't know, they have kiosks, we're saying they may have shown on the plans, maybe even well rocks that they're not allowed by the post office anymore. Utilities and fire protection, they provided a water sewer roof, fire pressure, ventilation, water utility district, multiply, everything that may be needed for this development in there, they are shown on the preliminary plan. Actual right away, show along four street road, they have to dedicate an additional bit of right away there, four street roads to play through. So thirty feet from the center line is required, we're still down there on the plans. Tractor state is not required, and this, this particular build doesn't generate enough trips. It's not to analyze it, but it's going on lots, which is usually need a hundred, hundred peak out trips per day to generate, to warrant a tractor state. However, if the planning commission, that was existing, some attractive issue that needs to be looked at more closely, we can certainly request that the developer gets one. All the proposed rates are to be public, so these are not private roads, they're public streets, have been maintained by the county when the development's done. Sidewalks are optional on both sides of the internal roads, most sidewalks have a force, they're not ringing, but it's really in the development. They're responsible for installing all sidewalks across the county open space. We do have a, they have a plan, they will find a plan as well. Sidewalk maintenance is a responsibility that's still in the county, we've taken and clarified that in recent years. And again, that will be built on the final plan. Local public's lot configuration appears to be requirements by right, that says, everybody knows, as we talked about earlier in the beginning, they, by rights, zoning wise, they can reduce this at a half acre. They elected not to do that, these lots are all over forty thousand square feet. There is a big restriction that requires that actually, that, so the county has fallen to forty thousand square feet. The developer is proposing setbacks, the government departments that they see the county standards. There's a twenty-five foot landscape buffer proposed around the perimeter of the project. For a development like this, it's rural residential, building rural residential, there is no buffer required at all. Because it's like, like touching light essentially. If it was a planned development or something that was more dense, it would have, it's not required, they may, they may rate the bill anyway. Thirty foot rear yard setback is required, they proposed a forty-five foot setbacks, they're in excess of that requirement as well. This, this development has common elements, attention basins and that kind of thing, and so there will have to be an HOA that may be set up. It's going to have to maintain all that, county will not maintain it for these folks, they'll need to be maintained by the HOA. And they have turned in a set of agreements, conditions and restrictions, CCR, which is the HOA, with this bill. And we would look at those difficulties and much more need to have reviewed at the final plan stage to make sure that all of our concerns related to stormwater maintenance and that kind of thing are addressed. And other common elements. As far as drainage, they have turned in a comprehensive construction plans and drainage calculations. Those calculations, if there's no net increase in stormwater runoff, to be posed as part of this. Calculations that have been invited by the engineer showing that production and offside runoff amounts. And so what that means is during any given storm event, the offside runoff amount, cubic feet per second, is to be reduced as a consequence of this development. Due to detention primarily and other, other, kind of illness that they have, show up the plans. Offside detention is debated, they have provided a multi-purpose erosion permission, seven control plan, which is a T bed requirement, with any construction plans. What is, we look to the final plan stage, we will take a look at anything that backs up the drainage management or has flood plane, we're done, have flood plane. Anything that has, that backs up the drainage or has slopes in excess of fifteen percent has to be deemed as a critical lot. When the individual building plan for it that's approved prior to the building permit, they issue, there will be several of those in this development. And those will be turned in to the county engineer. This is actually the plan that's recorded, and when they come back to the building department, it's the county engineer has to sign off on each one of those site plans individually. And there is a paper that. The drainage continued, construction plans and drainage calculations, which were all included in the package. Not everybody got full set of those construction plans, that was a big package at this time, I thought we would make sure that everybody got those. They've been reviewed by the county engineer at this time, we're not at the same where we're going to sample them through yet. But we're getting closer, wasn't the county engineer has had an opportunity by comments, so it's, they have provided responses. The plans that was submitted, they do appear to meet the county's requirements. Any outstanding comments, if there are any, leave to address, we can open more comments, though I have to address those too, the comments, so until we finally send it. So unfortunately, that's just what it is, if we notice some other problem or something like that, we will have to address it. So there might be five rounds of comments, that's not unusual, it's not optimal, but it's not unusual. The final set of plans has to be stamped approved by the county engineer prior to the commencement of construction activity. So they can't do anything until those construction plans are approved. And then that might involve all site business between us and our engineer, and as I said, all four hands of provisions. There is something that T A requires us to do, which is stormwater maintenance inspection agreement, because somebody has to take care of those retention ponds and water quality lessons. And so we require and agreement with the developer, the transversal laser, to ensure that all that stuff is maintained in perpetuity. And we inspect it every year, make sure that that's the case, that's required on our MS four permanent with the state. They have provided conceptual architecture, again, not requirement, can't ask for it, can't require, they have, they have turned it in to educate. Pretend that we can't require because it's a straight zone of development, this is something that's allowed by right by that, that meets, meets the county's requirements. So we can't necessarily want to see what the county's on about to do, designer deal, something like this. Although reasonably, perhaps we can, but in this context, we can't. That may say they have provided conceptual architecture for the concert, for most of the time. And so as far as supplies with our adopted plans, it's located in the suburban place site. And so our comprehensive plan, what it costs for a different, they low density residential, low density residential, meaning one building unit, purple one acre. And so if we go back to the beginning of the presentation, it's twenty-one building lots on thirty-two acres. So it does comply with that density requirement for the suburban place site. Next steps, our process is for the riggers, the safety process occupies the for the riggers. Next steps, they will need to this preliminary class approved here this evening. Now they will obtain construction plan approved from the county engineer, I signed those as well on the actual planning permission. When the construction plans are approved by the county engineer, they receive any and all T A permits, as others have produced. A R X, if they're required, or any other permits that might be obtained. Once all that's done, they make it us for approved destruction venue, so their contractors are there, usually their engineers are there, the developers are there. And we talk about the site, and we look at where the ponds are going to go, and we talk about how we want that to happen. And we lay out the time of day before when they need to do what they've got to do to make sure everybody understands. After that rig off, we make a full land service permit, that's something that they have seven of the bases. And so that's to catch all the mud and that kind of stuff that gets kicked up there in the course of construction, make sure it doesn't leave the site. To the extent possible, sometimes you have big rains and that kind of thing, but to the extent possible, within design standards, we do everything we can to make sure that that's the case. After land service permit is issued, grading activities can begin, and they can start putting in infrastructure. And so we talk about that, that start putting in the road, that start laying water and silver lines, we're going out utilities to operate, electric go in, air going in, all that stuff is going in. And tax act is there all the way through it, we inspect it, we require whether permits for the T A, they're expected to inspect it at least once a month. At, Joe Sykes has a really, and they give construction plans right there a lot more than that. And we take the roads throughout the process, every layer of the road, because again, has to be approved. The bonds and the video have to be approved by the county in order, in order to keep moving forward. If there are issues as far as probably be filled with mud, when they complain, all those things. So there is, that's the same as very rare, enforcement has had a sack here to be able to do that. And so once all the structures are installed, there will be a chance of completion, and what that means is curves in, all the attention is stabilized, everything is seed and straw and they've been cleaned up. The road has the fiber coat down, and so it's basically a road you can drive on and then use. That's when they can come back to the planning commission for the final plan. That's when they get to, and once the final plan's approved, that's when they get to start building houses. So they go through all that, all that to basically get to the point where they have. So they go through all that, all that, to basically get to the point where they actually pull building permits. And so that's conservatively a year to two years away before they actually start to pull the building permits. And in my life, that's just the way the developer works, it takes a while to get all the stuff in, get all the intent into all the things you have to. When they come to the planning permission, they do have to post a surety for the road, and for all the detention and drainage, including the curb re-gutter, all that has to be posted, so the various change of surety that has to be posted, and questions we got on the ground, problems and that kind of thing, less than development, mochers, we develop that surety for a length of time, and we'll release it until everything is essentially stabilized and ready to go. And they always ready to take over the bonds and all the stuff, all the stuff to sort away. That's what we'll release surety, and that's the way the state's always responsible to take care of stuff after that point. So Mr. Chairman, there's examples on the screen, to approval of preliminary kind of set of conditions, approval without conditions or to deny. Again, as I said earlier, we're denial per state law, per the county's regulations as well. They define certain areas of non-compliance from the county subdivision regulations in order to legally deny a plan. It is a by right application that they do have a right to do, unless they don't need requirements, so they can be denied. And so Mr. Chairman, the these two motion there to approve does have several conditions of approval. The first thing, as I said earlier, retains sound approval with the county engineer's construction plans. B, it's all roadway drainage infrastructure as shown on the construction plans to the point of substantial completion, as determined by the county prior to coming back to the final plan. Subville asphalt grounds is a requirement prior to coming back to the final plan, to make sure that the road where it's supposed to be, and the detention bases where they're supposed to be, and everything is where it's supposed to be. We require those asphalt, so we require asphalt, again, the forward lease and surety. And lastly, that stormwater inspection might experience that they didn't did that to us in order to come back to the final plan, and we'll report that with the final plan once it's approved. So thank you for the presentation, Mr. Chairman. If anybody's trying to ask any questions, I don't know, so if anyone wants to speak, if Ford wants to suspend the rules to allow that, that's service something we don't know.
I've heard a public comment, Kenny, did you would like to speak, when she lacked to suspend rules to allow them to speak? Someone, so we do another? Will someone make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
There is.
The motion is to allow, all of the folks say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Someone would like to speak?
My name's John Collier, Orange County Crosspoint, Andersonville. Once again, thank you for taking the time to listen to me and to other folks that have spoken on this matter. You have a lot on your plate, and obviously, if possible, we can. Mr. Boyd has been very helpful, he's come out to the property, he's walked the property with me. I expressed concern last time I was here about the topography. He actually had some maps that he showed me where the property drops sixty feet before it gets to my line, and then it's still a throw to drop all the way down to my houses.
Did you say that? Yeah, did you sneak? I think he had the drainage machine pulled a second ago. Just on that drainage machine.
And your point?
This is the river.
It's my first time. My lot is that one right there, and the topography of the water drainage right now comes straight now into my lot that way. There's a creek that runs right along in here, and it's a significant creek at this point, but where it gets to between my lot and the neighbor's lot, it's just a little tinny ravine. And I've shown Mr. Dodd the of how that floods at that particular point because of the water. Now, when I spoke with Mr. Dodd earlier today, he said there's a plan in place to have a ravine or a drainage area to go down this way, catch the water, and then come that way. My concern was that for the water to make a really sharp right turn, I'm really concerned that it might just jump that juncture there, and then it's, you know, full steam ahead down into my lot. My drain fields are right here for the septic tank, I have French drains around them, a heavy rainstorm right now fills those drains, and then comes the water back toward my house and some entrances. So my first concern would be having some kind of a buffer here, if the idea is to make the water go down and then come this way to protect the property at this point, and make sure that it doesn't just run out over the ravine. Like I said, right now, there's significant water flow without any houses being there and that. The second concern is that this feeds into this creek, which was a substantial creek at one point in time, but then when they built these houses, they just ended the creek basically, it runs into a little ravine. And the videos that I've shown Mr. Boyd show that it just jumps this little culvert this year and innitates side yard. I built my own wall to protect our property after that two thousand and ten flood, because as I mentioned, I had some fish around this area as a result of the ponds up here. So two concerns, one is this right here, the other is the water feeding into this creek without any particular changes that might need to be made to accommodate that water. Right here, there is a culvert under the road, there's another creek that runs this way, they meet, and it runs out that way. So my concern would be that while there's an ice creek here, it just ends up running in between my property and my next door neighbor's property, into a really small ravine, maybe two feet deep at some point. So to get the water to come more down this way, and not as much coming down into that creek. And again, from the topography, it causes that to just flow that particular way, it's gonna go that way, and it's gonna go that way. My understanding when I was here before was that the water would be directed to retention ponds and headed down this way to Forest Tree. There is a pond plant right up here, but that's a lot higher than any of this property in here, and the water's not gonna flow necessarily in here if it's directed around the property back and down that way. Have I represented this situation already?
I believe so, and also I mentioned the ditch, there's a diversion swell in the water. Yeah. There's a diversion swell, you know, right around, that carries the water around the lots, back towards the project. And talking to Mr. Collier, we're the concrete engineer for it, if he found that ditch, just to make sure that the water wouldn't jump out. And also too, there's a high slide, I think in the road, maybe here, that carries the water back to the ponds, it waters it in, and it releases it slowly to help offset those peaks, but anyway, that's, as Josh pointed out too, the plans, the drainage board, all will float, all will float that.
Can you talk about the swell along the lot lines there? Is there a swell?
Yeah, there's a swell along all the lot lines, it takes up that water, it takes it in, it brings the water going on in the neighboring plots, takes it into the projects and through the ponds, and is detained. And so I think that the neighbors, you know, will see, obviously see a benefit from that.
Can you point to that high spot again, if you mentioned?
I think it's, I think there's a high spot now in the, where it's at.
So that would be, that would be another third concern, is that water is gonna end up going back to that creek and then running down.
Yeah.
If the water, if from this high spot going this direction, is it gonna go into any of the ponds here? If there's any way to get the water directed to that copper retention pond over there on the left-hand side, that's there, but I don't know if it's gonna catch up a lot of water from that septic. It's a good place for it, but where it is now, the way you divert it the water, I don't think it's gonna be much use.
And if I could, you know, for the, yeah, question, question. Just, you know, just a little bit of complete piece of, I can do this.
So those are basically my concerns. Also, to be sure that if the water does get to that retention pond there, and you said there was a second place for the one here, there's one down there.
Yeah, there's one right there.
Yeah, but those are sufficiently sloped and deep enough to catch the water, or at least create some kind of a diversion. And, you know, I hope it'll become just a shooting pie in the sky, but, you know, we just have had a lot of water run off. Hopefully, this will increase that. My concern is that, as Mr. Bennett said, the increase in volume and velocity, if it's coming out of the clip, and sometimes it does, will it make those terms hit supposed to make sense? Thank you for listening.
Good question. If the engineer or director, the actual engineer or director here gets, if would a look closer, which you might, that may be a question that the county here could put in some other spot, at the time, make a statement to the police, to your president.
I'd say just one more thing, I want to thank Mr. Boyd for being kind of cooperative, he's been very helpful. And thank you all for listening.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you for letting me ask a couple of questions. So where my property is, is about, if I remember right, four lots this direction for Mr. Collier's. Yeah, the high number five.
Oh. It's two, four, five, it's bitching with the lawn.
Yeah. So, so the challenge that I see with the retention ponds and the topography coming to my yard is the property actually, the development property actually slopes this way down to my property. So not only are the retention ponds uphill going east to west, they're, the one at the top is also uphill going south to north. And their retention pond that's at the more toward Forest Tree is up and down going from north to south.
I believe this detention pond, I believe drains, there's a drain, the drains end back into the creek, and then goes back, falls naturally for any, so this one, that's no detention pond. I don't almost figure it's designed, but I don't think any detention pond is supposed to discharge down the property, correct?
Yeah, I'm not on the circuit of the retention pond discharge, it's why.
If you would know the numbers somewhere. If you, if I hear your concerns, so if you allow us now to give the engineers a record to go on record about that.
May I ask one more question? Would it be helpful for Mr. Boyd to come in with me and walk the property?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Another question?
All right, yes, I've heard the questions. I'm Charles, an R and W engineering.
The point, what's the point?
Oh, sweet, thanks. Engineer record there, and so, I can explain the design a little bit. So like Josh was saying, both, area, yeah, both these retention ponds, they do sit, I believe, I suppose it's right there, sit below this lot, so we're sitting at, I believe it's five ninety right there, on top of ponds, and we're sitting around five eighty three. So water for the entirety of this site is being diverted, so actually, there's gonna be a big benefit to lots on the back end here, because water right now is flowing pretty much from west to east, and with the design here, we're diverting water, one with the roadway, and two with the ditches, so there are two layers of protection, and the majority of water here, here. These ponds are upsized to create a better condition once they're currently to reduce the flow off the lots. So, you know, not all the water is making it to each one of these ponds, under three, the reduction of flow at the exit points that are currently there, which is this stream right here, and this stream right here, should be reduced greatly. I hope that answers those questions.
So basically, you're saying that the after is gonna be better than before?
Yes. Especially, I think the existing conditions, especially with his lot in particular, there are a little bit of a bulge here, because he sits kind of at the high point where it has a little tornado, so I think it's agricultural lands, so there's a lot of sediment coming on. With, with the landscated buffers there, and the ditches, and the ditches you want, first things are gonna be going in, water will be diverted, the slopes will be stabilized, and it should handle the tender storm.
Does any member have a question for the engineer or director?
I have a question. Twenty lots nine and ten, are you pulling water down that property line? Is that a ditch?
Uh, yes.
So there's been some concern about water turning that corner?
Yes.
But you're pulling the intense flow down the property line into the cul-de-sac, into the drains?
Yes, I think some of ours being diverted to the road drainage system, but yeah, it's difficult, I think, Mark, for your comments, we can beat that up.
But the substantial flows, well, I'm worried about the intense flow, because it would be hard to make that bend around ninety degrees. But it looks like you're pulling the intense flow from the very steep section to the roadway and into the drainage system, which would be the upstream pond.
Yes.
Thank you.
Does any other member have a question?
My question, I have a comment too, that I'll hold up, but my concern here, testing the record is traffic issues, or any, many houses, twenty-one houses on two Forest Tree Road, which will, I have a little far from here, so I don't know how the traffic can be. That's another, I mean, has there been, are we doing a traffic study? Is there been traffic studies?
No, I can, it's, it's, per our regulations, we have to do my regulations, it's not big enough to warrant a study, it's not, it's not.
It's fair to give a bet.
I have a question. Maybe either of the engineers can answer the question, I think. Around lots nine and ten, I'm seeing that that drainage ditch is anywhere from twenty-five to fifty feet wide. Am I seeing, if I scale one inch equals fifty feet, and I'm looking at, it's about two feet deep, that's the easement width, I don't know if the ditch is that wide?
Well, I'm looking at the contours for the ditches, they're running almost the entire easement. Does that, does that sound all right?
So the way this site had ingrained, and as to why it's steep on that, we're cutting into the existing grounds, and we created some steep slopes on the back end, but the ditch itself is only two feet tall and six feet wide, that's gonna be handling the water. Everything else is just high up.
If there was any possibility, as Mr. Collier was saying, of a jug in the ditch, I think we've got elevation to deepen it if we need to.
That's right.
And then it might be a safety factor that one will, that you might not consider. Okay, I guess that's my other question.
Any other question?
One thing I will add, Mr. Chairman, is that, you know, design is great, you know, it is heard by the county engineer, that kind of thing, but one thing that I was referring to earlier is that they were fully empowered to do this, what really makes the difference out of the field is field adjustments, and so. the difference out of the field is field adjustments, and so, we have the design, it's approved, we go to construction, we realize that that's not quite working the way that we thought it would, or it's, they, they saw some issues, yeah, this, you know, we can't wait for rain, we reserve the right, and these guys have to do it like everybody else does, we can require changes in the field, if the ditch needs to be deeper, or something needs to be, the pond needs to be excavated deeper, we require those kinds of things in the past for developments we have required for this, and so if there are issues that we know that the field or problems, that they come up, they're, they're the force of development, we're, we're fully empowered to make these folks to get going and to, to make adjustments in the field, and, and, and correct them in the field, so just as something is approved there, it's not something that, that they can't, that we can't go back and work on and fix. That, that sounds, I don't know, to you guys, that probably sounds like, like I'm just talking, but I'm telling you, in the field, the real issues come up, and somebody's had an issue, and we just didn't anticipate, that ability to actually make it go in and fix it is huge, it is huge, and that's, that's how you solve problems, and then, as the development progresses, that lets you know, okay, you know, talk about the things in five years, right, if you get them to build it, tweak it, tweak it, tweak it, and get it just right, you're not going to have those issues in five years, and the same is to be part of the neighborhood at that point, and so that's a little to work toward, and so, design is great, and we definitely have our extension plans, everything that's actually just so, but it's, it's the sacrifice of the field to the county commissioners here, and the county commission, that's, that's where these developments really are relevant, and your performance is when you actually start moving there, and we require to, to make sure they're not causing any problems, which is, my first priority is always going to be the existing residents, and not the developer, frankly, just to be honest, and so we got to make sure that the folks that are already here living in some of the county don't, don't have a negative impact from something like this.
Any other questions to the engineer record?
Thank you, sir.
Am I turning a motion?
I move to approve the conditions.
Has a motion been, a motion due to approve the conditions, is there a second? I have a second right there, is there any other questions? Any discussion? Oh, is that motion, both are saying aye? Did I get a aye over there?
Yes.
Okay, and I got a aye there, so we have three, so the motion passes. Thank you. Is that, is that the last thing I have?
Mr. Chairman, the last thing I have is the administrative approvals, which I just pulled up the package just to show you guys, it's a, we wanted to, lots of business to come through, you guys never see that we, we do approve, and there were several of them there in the past month, I'm just, we're running it in front of four days' clock right now, I'm going to be the director of the board, and that's all I have.
And depending on what you took, the chairman, have a motion, have a second, any question? All things live aye.
All right.
What do you want tonight?
Yeah.